I'd like to call the meeting to order if you would stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Okay, welcome everyone here tonight and welcome everyone watching from home. I apologize for everyone not having a chair, but please try and come in, make yourself comfortable. There is a little bit more room upstairs if anyone would like to go up there. I'm not sure there's any more chairs left. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVor.
Present.
Trustee Gett.
Present.
Trustee Kazam.
Present.
Trustee Goff. Trustee Wigington.
Present.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Present.
Okay, we do have a quorum, so welcome again, everyone. Madam Clerk, any correspondence?
I do have two letters here. First one is addressed to the Mayor, Administrator, and Board members. This is in regards to events happening in the last few months and year. I voiced my concerns a year ago to the Board about hiring a person that was not qualified to be in the position. I was told by a Board member that if he could, he would vote for the most qualified person. In return, he said he chose the quote "best fit" end quote instead. I'm aware it was not a Village Board decision. In the process, the department downgraded the level of medical care to only emergency medical responder. Here we are again in a dire situation. We need a new fire chief because the previous resigned for quote "medical reasons." There is much more to it, isn't there? My understanding was the chief and assistant chief were hired and a big part of the position was to recruit volunteers and run calls. So they managed to recruit their friends and relatives of neighboring departments, none that live in the village of Peoria Heights. Kind of seems like a good old boys' club or maybe the Friends and Family Fire Department. They were able to get a few others randomly and some that remained on the department from before they started paying the fire and assistant chief. I feel like the amount of effort put into recruiting these last two weeks should have been done a year ago at least. This is about a lack of volunteers, lack of recruitment, volunteers that are tired and rundown, and the need for help. I thought the suggestion to utilize Peoria Fire for temporary assistance was a great idea, whether it be for a few months, a year, or even a few years. The volunteers said they work well with Peoria Fire, so that should not be an issue unless they are not truthful. I do understand that it could be opening Pandora's Box, but then again, public safety comes first. Minutes count whether it is a house fire, a fire with entrapment, or a medical call. I, as a 30-plus-year professional in the field of pre-hospital care and a few years of experience in firefighting, am seeing ironies with the current situation. If volunteers are tired and rundown, paying them full or part-time to run those same calls will not change that. If anything, you would want them to respond less. Paying a wage for a few pre-chosen people will not fix the problem. As I looked over the other three options another Board member presented, the volunteers requested paid employees. But when is the call load the heaviest? Day, evening, or nighttime? When is there a lack of volunteers? It sounded like they were able to get staff or fire calls. In fact, Dalton stated they were able to get the recommended eight to nine personnel to the scene in under 10 minutes. On another note, instead of calling a Mavis box, they call mutual aid. This means the extra time it takes to get personnel from, say, Hill Coffee, West Peoria, or Dunlap, my property could burn longer. With a Mavis box or a Village contract with Peoria Fire, there could be there in a few minutes to stop the loss of property. As a reminder, the volunteers stated they work well with Peoria Fire on scenes. AMT runs the medical calls, so is it wrong to say that if the volunteers stopped running the medical calls, the call volume would decrease about 200 calls a year? I'm not for this idea, but with the little medical training and lack of medicine the volunteers have, would it be easier to just keep the volunteers for fire calls, car wrecks, and cardiac arrests only? Another issue I have with a paid department option is no one is required to have at least an EMT license. The call numbers reflect that about 80%, if not more, of the calls are medical. Why wouldn't we invest in a paid crew that is medically qualified to at least an EMTB, Emergency Medical Technician Basic? Would the Village have a paid crew, applicants pass a written test, CPAT test, lie detector test, legal background check, and a drug test? Then go to the fire academy for eight to 12 weeks and obtain their EMT lessons, paid for by the Village? These are things that a career fire department like Peoria Fire Department must go through. In return, they receive good pay, a pension, and other perks. There are liabilities and possibly interjuries that can happen when personnel are not trained or properly vetted. I'm not opposed to having Peoria Fire help out. I would love to see the Peoria Heights Fire Department become a fire protection district if possible, but that will take time. Until then, I do feel that safety is first and foremost, the safety of the residents and the safety of the volunteers. I don't want to see the collapse of the Peoria Heights Fire Department, but I would also hate to see the department showing favoritism to certain volunteers in order to secure a paid position for them, thus lowering the criteria needed to qualify. I believe the Village will get through this issue. It may not be a popular way to do it, but it may be the safest for now. Please contact me with any comments, concerns, or questions. Diane Close.
The second letter that I have reads as follows, and is addressed to Mayor Phelan and Administrator Sutton. It saddens me to have come to a place in my life that makes this letter necessary. Ongoing personal health issues have been ramping up over the last several months, culminating in an urgent visit to my doctor. In the interest of myself and my family, I must address these issues. Therefore, under the direction of my physician, I will resign my position as trustee on the Peoria Heights Village Board. I would like to thank both of you for the confidence placed in me initially appointing me to do this job. I've been looking forward to assisting in the development of our water department improvements and other Village business. However, my health and family must be my priority. Sincerely, Mark Agoff.
Is that all, Madam Clerk?
That is all.
Just a quick comment on Mark Goff's letter. I know it saddens us all that Mark's health is not the best and he's had to resign, so I wish him nothing but very, very good health in the future. And I don't think I've ever served with anyone more capable and qualified than Mark, so nothing but good for him in the future. It is our duty to fill that vacancy, and we'll act on that resignation later in the meeting. So it's my job to provide the Board with a name, and it's their job to approve an appointment. I spent a lot of time thinking about this, and it's not on the agenda tonight, so it's not for action tonight, but I'll have it on the agenda at the first meeting in September when we meet again. A lot of folks came to mind in filling this vacancy, and I thought long and hard about it, so I intend to put the name of Jen Riker in for the vacancy of Mark Goff. Jen has a lot of closeness and history with the fire department, and I think she can help us get a new chief hired, which I hope to do at the next meeting, and give a lot of input. I think it's time to change direction and start looking at getting duty crews and getting more help here in the Village, so that's going to be her task if the Board approves her, so I wanted to interject that quickly. And I don't know if you're Jen, I don't see you here tonight. There you are, okay, all right. Next is approval of the minutes from the Board of Trustees meeting on August 1st, 2023. It asks for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any corrections to the minutes? Discussion on the motion? Hearing now, all those in favor of approving the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. We have comments from the audience. If you'd like to address the Board tonight, please come forward to the podium, and if you could speak up into the microphone so anyone watching at home can hear you, please give your name and address, and try and keep your remarks to five minutes or less. Ray, go right ahead.
Twist my arm, I'll go first. I'm here to talk, I mainly want to talk about the article that was in the Journal Star and some comments that were attributed to some of our trustees. Trustee Wigington, they had up to you, said contracting with the Peoria Fire Department will not lead Heights to losing its identity. This is a false narrative. I disagree 100%. We are who we are because of our identity, our independence, and our autonomy. Bringing them onboard now makes us part of another entity which we obviously do not What I do think is a false narrative is this use of the buzz phrase "safety," resident safety. It's a dog whistle, a buzz phrase. When you throw it out there, you've got everybody's attention, and suddenly you're rallying the troops on your side. I challenged at the last board anybody to produce any incidents where safety was compromised because of our volunteer fire department. That would be police safety, fire safety, resident safety, gawkers safety, anybody's safety. And with that safety, there should have been an incident report that contains subjective and objective data, an evaluation, a plan developed, an implementation, and an evaluation of that. So to date, I've heard nothing. So if there is no incidents going on, we can please drop this safety aspect. It hasn't been in the past. Why it's being thrown out there, that it suddenly is, I do not understand. Trustee Kazam, you were quoted that negativity is not helpful as well as inaccuracies, and I agree 100% with you. And you also went on to say you were ridiculed by another member of the public for where you live and your income. I don't think that's germane, and I apologize for whoever said it and you having to be subjected to it.
Thank you.
Now, the very first meeting that we ever brought up this discussion of possibly contracting with Peoria Heights, when it got around to you, you said it would be nice to know what the electorate wanted. And I thought, wow, we finally have somebody that's elected that's going to represent us. However, last week, when we were all here to say what we felt and what we wanted, you were busy on your cell phone almost the entire meeting. And I just, to me, that would be rude if you started texting while I'm talking. If you don't want to hear, tell me to shut up and go sit down. It's not a problem.
You're right, and I apologize for that.
I've said on many committees, from high up in the state on down, and the majority of them have a no-cellphone rule. I implore the Heights, if we don't have one, to adopt one. If we do, implement it. And with that, thank you all.
Thank you, Ray. All right, who'd like to be next? Yes, sir.
I'm actually not here for the fire issue. So, sorry to disappoint everyone. So I'll make sure my remarks are pretty brief. My name is Derek Schreier, I'm legal counsel to KDB Group. At the July Village Board meeting, there was discussion on the pump house lease and the search for a new tenant. During the discussion, one of the trustees inquired whether the 2022 Peoria County real estate taxes were paid. KDB Group's real estate broker, Julie Beelfelt, was in the audience. She alerted the appropriate representatives of KDB Group. We identified that was an oversight. It was paid within 48 hours. Also within 48 hours, KDB Group received a letter from the Village terminating its lease for the pump house. That came as a significant surprise to us. Certainly, we thought that we had an open dialogue with the Village to try to position KDB's portfolio of real estate in the appropriate future developer's hands. So I had inquired of Village Attorney Walton if the Village would reconsider that position. I have not heard any response from the Village, and that is why I'm here before you tonight. I'm also here to let you know that KDB Group does have a signed letter of intent for the pump house. We, over the last month, have continued to try to find an appropriate tenant. It's a retail establishment specializing in desserts. I think, you know, as a family with two small kids that have a sweet tooth, I think it would be a great asset for this community, and I would respectfully ask that this Village Board reconsider its position on the pump house lease with KDB Group. Thank you.
Counsel, thanks for being here tonight. You're throwing me a real curve because I felt that the attorney protocol is that when attorneys are involved, the communication go from attorney to attorney. Counsel Walton, you want to add anything to what was said or just put it in the record?
Nothing to add.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, who else?
Stephanie Crawford, 905 East Division Avenue. Hello again. There seemed to be a misconception before the last meeting on August 1st that the community was supportive or ambivalent to contracting with Peoria for fire services. I think it's fair to say that the community proved that day that there was overwhelming support for the Peoria Heights Fire Department and investing money into our own community to support and improve the services inside of our village. It's interesting to me that there are trustees intent on staying the course by contracting with Peoria despite public outcry and despite the trustees' claim that they want to listen to the community. I've yet to hear answers to legitimate questions that have been brought up regarding the supposed ineptitude of the Peoria Heights Fire Department, why the voices of the Peoria Heights Fire Department weren't listened to, and why we aren't investing in our village and its services instead of funding Peoria. It didn't escape notice that the only community member who spoke for the Peoria contract on August 1st was a trustee's husband, and he didn't address the Board. He addressed the community members who had gathered to support the Peoria Heights Fire Department. I'm hopeful that the Board as a whole will listen to the community and choose to support and grow our own Village services. Thank you.
Go ahead, Pat.
Good evening. I'm Patrick Casey, lifelong resident, except when I went to serve our United States military. My question is, our chief administrator serves in two capacities. My question is, in transparency, Mr. Mayor, I would like to know how his hours are split between being the chief and being the administrator of our village. Now, is he putting in 80 hours a week? Is he putting in 40 hours a week? And I'd like to know how that split comes down in transparency now of how he is being paid, because I'm under the assumption that he's being paid two salaries. Is that correct?
He gets a salary for being police chief and administrator. You are correct.
Okay, and how many hours a week does he put in as police chief?
He puts in whatever hours are required, but I can tell you, he's police chief 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and that contract identifies that the Village has in place with him, that the Board has approved, and I think Trustee DeVor worked on that contract, what's required of him. Trustee DeVor, do you have any?
I don't know that it specifies exactly how many hours he has to dedicate to both. I will tell you, he's putting in more hours than anyone else in this entire community. I mean, he is here very early.
Productive hours.
In my opinion, yes, he is putting in productive hours. I mean, for example, during the pandemic when riots were happening, he was in here all day long and worked alongside all of his police officers and still didn't let anything with the Village take a seat, like a backseat either. He was in here having meetings with us, one-on-one, or doing whatever he had to do and filling the obligations in full uniform, and then at night was standing with all of his police officers, defending them when the riots were happening. I'm not going to say that every employee that we have is 100% perfect. I'm not going to say that there's never a minute that he works that isn't, you know, to the best of his ability, but in my opinion, he does a lot for both jobs, and I don't feel like either job at this time is taking a hit from him holding both positions.
I just question how a man can work for two salaries, making over $200,000 a year, and doing functioning, because he's even said himself that he's overwhelmed by the amount of work he's doing. My recommendation would be to find an individual to serve either as the chief or an administrator, split those jobs, and have two functioning assets.
I appreciate your concern, and I think that that is not something that is taken lightly. I mean, this Board as a whole did vote for him to take those positions, but I do think that there is going to be time in the future where we're going to have to look at how the workload for that, for him to hold that full position.
I've got a master's degree in business. I know, I've ran businesses before, the Air Force, I was a hospital administrator, I ran a 500-bed hospital. I know the hours that I put in, and I know that one man cannot put in over 80 hours a week and be totally functional. Can't do it.
Go ahead, Mary.
You need my address? I tried to send this to Stephanie, maybe I didn't have the right email for correspondence. Maybe you didn't get it in time? Probably not.
That was passed forward for...
Did you email that, Mary, today?
Yeah, but I might not have had the right email address either, so I'll just read it.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor Phelan and Board of Trustees, I would hope that you realize what we all have lost by Mark resigning. His knowledge of the water system, as well as the streets and sewer, will not be easily replaced. Obviously, I do not know why he resigned, but I have a pretty good idea, and that's extremely unfortunate. I would like to thank Mark for the time he did serve the citizens of Peoria Heights. Mark is definitely a person of the heights, not just someone who lives here.
Mike Casey, lived here 60 years, all my life, worked for the Village for about 27 years. My whole point is, you guys work for us, we don't work for you. You're elected, so our concerns is your concerns to take care of us. So I'm gonna leave that at that. Now, I've heard the fire department, the whole deal, the last month, two months, or whatever, once you got something, you hate to lose it. If you want to do the trickle effect, if it's going to be the fire department, the school district, the police department, or whatever, once they get their foot in the door, they're going to be banging away, trying to take that. And I'll be damned, I've been on the, I've been on the school board for 27 years now, and I love the kids, and I love everybody in the Heights, but if you're going to do this kind of stuff, then move to Peoria. That's all I can say. I'm not. And the last question I got, all you Board members made all your statements, and I'm not going to sit up here and beat a dead horse, I want to ask you, Mr. Phelan, what's your agenda on the fire issue?
I don't really understand the question. My agenda for the future, for right now?
No, what's your, okay, opinion about this whole deal, you being a lifelong resident, about the fire department?
My opinion is, and where I have disagreed on a couple of the options, I don't think we need a Band-Aid, we need a fix, and that's where I disagreed with one of the options. We have a lot of calls here in this department, and I think that the evidence will show that 70% of the calls this year had two or fewer people showing up to those calls. We need to do better. I'm not faulting anyone, especially the fire department. So, we have tried a lot of things, Mike, and you were here to know that after Chief Walters retired, who handled dozens and dozens of calls a day, we were in a predicament because Greg handled all those calls. So the Board decided at that point to hire a full-time chief, where folks here tonight, like Norm Riker and Greg Walters, volunteered their time. They volunteered with passion and gave it themselves, going way back to the Bill Bear and on and on and on. So what we did, because of that void, we hired a full-time chief. That was a first. And then, we also went into hiring a full-time firefighter. That was also a big investment. I felt, I went along with that, but I felt hiring one person really didn't fix anything. And when Greg was chief, before COVID, we sat in my office a couple of times and going over what a duty crew would look like. So from here on out, I have supported duty crews, but I don't want one just in the daytime. I want duty crews along with volunteers around the clock so we can provide the best service to the people who live here. That's my agenda.
Okay, one more question for you. I've heard that before, thanks a lot for your remarks. One more question for you, the fire protection district, well, hopefully we can get that going if that's the last resort, not unless you guys do something different. Let me ask you one other question. I pay taxes to Richwoods Township, can they put in to help the fire department? Or is that against the law? You know all the rules and regulations.
They don't levy for a lot of money. When I was supervisor of the township, I think they took in like $250,000 in total tax money. I understand the reason that is out there for a fire protection district, I don't think that solves the problem, because you literally could not levy enough money. I think it's the Village responsibility, and the Village should get, should stay with that responsibility. I support the idea of putting it on the ballot, give Trustee Weisenberg a whole lot of credit for getting the signatures to put it on the ballot, but I don't think, that's not the right step. The right step, I believe, is for the Village to maintain fire service, not turn it over to the fire protection district, but that'll be in the hands of the people. But what I am, again, what I am in favor of is getting the resources. I want to get a chief hired, I want to get Jen Riker actively involved in helping hire that chief, and then I want that chief to do what I would call a needs assessment of the department. We need to get a duty crew, at least in the daytime, in my opinion, hired right away. And I always like to say, well, you never, I don't have a vote, it's up to the Board, but, you know, that was proven wrong recently, when there's rarely a tie. So that's my agenda. And I understand, and I heard, we're hearing you all. Some of us thought that this contract would be a temporary solution to get us to a point, but that's not the direction I think we need to go in now. We need to get the chief hired and get a duty crew in place. Hopefully, again, my voice is around the clock.
Okay, that sounds good. I got one more thing, and then I'm going to sit down and shut up. Just say the fire department all walked out. What are you going to do about this building? Where are you going to have your building, your office and all that? Because it all goes back to the Bill Rutherford trust. That's in writing.
Well, I don't think we're going, we're not going in that direction. We're going to keep...
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, that's an option. I ain't telling the firemen to quit, I support them 100%, but I'm just saying, what happened, what would happen? If you ever get rid of the fire department, Bill Rutherford said this building goes back to the trust, his trust. That worries me to death, too. I've seen firemen throw their badges up here, right up here. They're walking off. Mary and them know the deal on that, they threw their badges up there. I'm just saying, Peoria Heights folks wants to keep their fire department, Mike. We want to. So whatever you can work out, and I'll leave it at that, hopefully for the best, for the Heights residents, you've been here a long time or a short time, we take care of our own, and we've done that for years. We saved our school district, our school. Remember Mary Sharp?
Remember Mary Sharp?
Hi, my name's Cindy Crawford, 626 East Marietta. As you're talking about your fire department needing EMTs or paramedics, did you once ever offer them schooling to be that way? Anybody on the fire department, ever once? Did you offer them education to get that?
I can't answer that. Trustee Wigington, are you able to answer that?
Well, let me ask one of our firemen in the, who's here. Were they ever, anybody ever offer you guys education?
It is offered, but the last two years it's been removed from the budget.
Removed from the budget.
It's offered through the fire department administration, not through the Board.
Okay.
The fire department is making that offer.
All right, so, I think if you really are fair and think about it, I think they need to be educated. An EMT class does not take that long to take, all right? And most BLS will teach you. And most people who take a certified class knows how to be able to do that, all right? Kids are coming in sixth and seventh grade down to OSF Jump Center to learn how to take care of folks that are hurt on the side of the road. You could take all of these folks down here, our firemen, and have them learn how to do that. So I would recommend somebody might check into that for our fire department, and if not, I'll be glad to do that. I am an employee of OSF.
Thank you.
All right? Thank you.
All right, who else? Anyone else? Yeah, go ahead, Dalton.
See, after last time, I don't know that anybody needs my name and address again. My name's Dalton Carlson, I live at 5133 Montclair, and I am currently one of the assistant chiefs on the fire department, as you may well see. So I... So, I originally wasn't going to speak tonight, but there's a couple of things that I want to speak to here. The first would be, in reference to Trustee Goff, coming from the Fire Department here, Trustee Goff has had family that's been on the Fire Department, he's been part of this village for many years. Obviously, we may not have seen eye to eye with every decision he may have made, but we wish him the best from the Fire Department, from all of us. We wish him the best for his health, the best for his family, and everything like that. So, we wanted to make sure that we put that out and made sure that that was on the record here.
Thank you.
Secondly, I just wanted to add our comments on a few things that came up during Mike Casey's comment section. When Chief Thompson was hired, he was hired part-time, not full-time. I would love to have seen him hired full-time, and I think that's where a lot of our issues stemmed, not having two full-timers. And Chief Shaw was hired as a full-time Assistant Chief, not a full-time firefighter. So he's the only one full-time remaining. And as for a needs assessment, fire chiefs from this department have been providing needs assessments for over 10 years. They've all said the same thing. We need to start paying staff around the clock to supplement the volunteers. We keep going back to the city, I can't quite understand that, when the needs assessments keep coming in saying the same thing. We want to hire a new chief, we absolutely need to do that. I'm 100% for that. I have a feeling the new chief's gonna say the same thing. We need to hire a duty crew to work around the clock, more than just one person, we need more than one. And we need them to supplement the volunteers. I don't understand why we keep going back to the drawing board here when we've got the plan and need to move forward. So, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Heather McMeacon, 3820 North Monroe. First, I'd like to apologize to Trustee DeVor. I was a little hard on you last time, because I was under the impression that you had started this, and now I realize that there's actually a different story. I have spoken with dozens of the residents here, several police officers, and several diverse officers who tried to get employed in the Police Department here, but were told that there's no hiring going on. So I believe that you rightfully brought up an issue, which I thank you. What I have a real issue with is how certain people, who seem to have some other interest at play, jumped on it as an excuse to attack the volunteers and what they do. Now, I'm gonna put out a couple of things out there, because I do believe in sunlight. I'm a former ACLU board member. By my training, sunlight is the best disinfectant. My understanding is that the former mayor was a sexual harassing, sexual predator for several of the women in this village, and several of the employees. And then, his crimes were hidden from the voting public. And he was allowed to have a separate duty location while parking near here to thwart the voting public from understanding he had been taken out of power. These are allegations, but I do believe these people who have told me this. And that no charges were filed. Worse, that the victims of that, those crimes, were told to be silent, live in this community silently about them. That is unacceptable at every level. What, no matter who it is, if they are a public servant, and they commit crimes against people who work here, and then you tell the people they committed crimes against to be silent about that, they have an active hostile workplace environment claim against this community. As do officers, if they are diverse and receiving messages that there are no jobs here for them. Another complaint. Like, there are some structural deficits going on that really need to be addressed in this governing body, but by an outside source, and I will call now for an external audit. I am shocked to find out that the police chief is also the city administrator. Right there, you've got, you might be the nicest guy in the world, the most competent, have all the energy, and never needs sleep. That's not the issue to me. I'm not, I, no, you're not supposed to talk during public comment, and I'll tell the public why you don't.
I'm not the chief.
Okay. The Assistant Chief, okay. Still, because of public comments, right now, there's a horde of people in here, so people feel safer speaking. But when it's just you and one person making a public comment, if the body responds to what they say, that may intimidate quite a few people out of speaking. So it's a structural issue, but I appreciate the latitude with which you have allowed this. And the other thing I'd mention is a structural deficit that you might look into, just to limiting your written public comments to maybe 500 words, just for brevity, and so that people can be succinct. But the other thing that I will say is, there was never an apology to those victims of that former mayor. I'm gonna give you that apology now. To those victims, I am sorry that you endured that in this community. That happened before I got here, and I hope it's not still continuing. Now, the other thing I'll point out is that rescue squad members, who are volunteer, are witnesses to the way the police operate in a community. I have heard some very awful, awful witness accounts of certain things like a police officer choking a trauma victim with a flashlight this past spring. I am just gonna say, if there's any truth to these allegations, then the people trying to get rid of the witnesses to it, who can speak up and replace them with paid public servants, who will never be able to speak up against wrongdoing by the police at the scenes, you're losing very important knowledge about the way that your public servants are operating in the community. They may be operating perfectly fine, but I happen to believe these folks because of the evidence that I have been shown. Some other allegations include labor law violations, human rights violations, civil rights. There are some real issues with the Police Department, and getting rid of these folks, who actually treated everybody, by what I can tell. Everyone I've talked to has nothing but good things to say about the care they've been given. That is to your credit. You have a really good fire department, even if they are underfunded, but you have lost several people who left, and some have been referenced here, claim, and I believe them, that they were retaliated on, intimidated, mistreated, and both publicly and privately. That needs to end now. So what I'll tell you is, if you are ever mistreated, things on the public record get written into this community's history forever, and they can't stop that. So if you have something to say, you're speaking to the future generations about what you think about your community at this point in time, and future historians will better understand how things go down. I will just say, I hope that you really look at the structural deficits. You get a separate administrator, because that would be the thing to do. You get a real affirmative action officer to go after these complaints. And when somebody who works here, even if they're an elected official, harms women... There's a reason why there's a lot of women not working and volunteering, because some of them have been treated really horribly. That needs to end, too. And I hope that if you aren't safe telling your story living here, you can write it into your journals, you can put it in your estate plans. As long as you have an affidavit witness from a notary public, then you can have it in your estate plans. To go to a university, they'll put in the archives, and they will rewrite the history on your abusers. And I hope you do that. The last couple of things I'll say is, you know, while some may benefit from the loss of this oversight, it will not be good for this community, because it's never good for any community. Structural deficits, even if you're the best people in the world sitting in those, structural deficits still introduce bias, conflicts of interest, and more importantly, risk to the governing body and the taxpayer base from lawsuits. Fix this stuff. Getting rid of these folks, and the way it was done is blatantly anti-democratic, it is anti-transparency, and one might even consider it to be an authoritarian concentration of power in a few people's hands. That is not how a democracy is supposed to work. In other communities, rescue squads, dive teams and such, are finding the same thing with anti-government people in their own government, now trying to do away with them. I will point you all to Shelby County and their dive team, what has happened there. So what I'll say is, if you are a good-faith public servant, and you came in here in good faith to serve, don't let the bullies back you down and make you leave. Please don't resign, because that only hastens the concentration of power, the loss of transparency and democratic voice. And this community of people clearly deserves a lot better from everybody, so thank you.
Just for the record, before we go to anyone else, our police officers do wear body cams, so any allegations against any misconduct by a police officer is taken seriously. So, okay, welcome.
Hi, you guys. I'm Stephanie Rutherford. I live at 728 East Division, Peoria Heights. My, I am third generation owning a house in the Heights. My kids are fourth generation, going through our grade school, which was an awesome school, and I want them to have the things that we had. I just have a few, a concern, and a question for Mrs. DeVor about her answer on Chief Sutton. You said you don't see a lack of the pleasing. My family, and I get a little shaky, I have some PTSD from this, was harassed all last summer by Skylar Walker, living in a flop house across the street from me. The police told us several times he was harmless. Oh, they came with their body cameras on, and they never took the time to write a report on several complaints. On my eldest daughter's 18th birthday, Skylar Walker exposed himself to my kids. I even had so many minors there, because we have a big family from the Heights, and once one kid turns something, everybody comes. So, I had all ages. I even asked the officer, I said, "Oh, my gosh, some kids just left. Do I need to call their parents? Do they need to come fill out a report? Do they need to sign this? Because if that was my kids, I would want that." The officer said, "No, I have it all down." He never filed a report. My family and friends had to go to the state's attorney's office to file our own report. We were harassed. I even had to get a restraining order on Skylar Walker after he was served. My daughter told me he followed her to the bus stop. I had a witness, when I called Officer Bowles over, he came and he told me, "I'm sorry, that just didn't happen. There's nothing we can do about that." I went back to the judge for my second week. You get second, you get your two weeks, and that's when you can make your restraining order last two years. I go, and I'm pleading to the judge, and I am saying, "Please help me." I'm crying, my mom's crying at my house, we're asking for help. None of the officers are helping us. And the judge said, "Honey, it doesn't matter how many feet I give you. If the officers are not gonna enforce it, I can give you 1,000 feet, and nothing's going to get done." Later, my mom came up to a Neighborhood Watch meeting, and she had talked to the officers about it. Officer Jody got a little irritated that, "Why would you go to the state's attorney's office? Why would you not file a report, officers? It doesn't make sense." Sorry, I lost my train of thought, I get a little nervous. But we, I needed the police. I needed their help, so I don't know how someone who was supposed to be harmless burnt down another house. And we all know there's several flop houses. Sarah, where's your neighborhood? Because I'll send them over, I'll pack sandwiches and goodies for them that can come hang out with you. Because what happens to us is not fair, and we are the people of Peoria Heights. We live here, we are the communities, we are the generations that keep on building. And I will say this on Officer Dan Bowles's credit. He stood up, and he apologized. He said to my mom, "Mrs. Crawford, I am sorry that I was one of the ones that did not fill out a report." Sergeant Kreider told me from the beginning that, "Oh, it's just Skylar Walker, and the guy that was in jail's whose house it is, that's okay, he has permission." Come to find out, Skylar Walker never had permission to be in that house. He squatted and tormented me all summer long in my kids. They were terrified to go outside. So Sarah, I don't see how, and just, Slow Hand was just robbed by a meth head. We have a huge meth problem, and we're not talking about it, and we're not doing anything about the flop houses. So I don't see Chief Sutton doing anything for me and my family. I don't feel safe with some of these police officers. I don't trust them. I don't know when the officers get to choose and serve when they protect. I thought they had to do that every time they came out to you. Or maybe I'm wrong. But thank you for letting me get on my soap. Oh, and one more question, sorry. No matter what fire department we have, no matter how many brilliant volunteers we've had, and we've had some amazing ones. Ivy volunteered as an EMTB right out of high school. I was on the top 10 of most ambulance calls answered my first year. I got to serve under Norm Riker, which I was really lucky. And Debbie's dad, Mr. Faulkner, some of the most amazing people, and we had so many great volunteers. And it's not about as many volunteers as we have, because if you're not helping us, where's everybody gonna go? They're gonna get burned out, they're not gonna want to play the games you play all the time. And even if we have Peoria coming and help us, if we blow water mains every time we attach to a hydrant, it doesn't matter who's saving our butts. You know what I'm saying? And I'm really sorry if I was off topic, but thank you guys so much.
Hi, I'm Teresa Schuman. I live at 5,005 Ogden. I'm sticking my neck out here. Anyway, I came in late, because it was hard to find a parking space, and maybe you announced this at the beginning. I know he's a very busy man with two jobs, but where is the city administrator, Mr. Sutton, at tonight? That he's not at the meeting?
I don't think, you know, there are laws called HIPAA, and I'm gonna go out on a limb, and I'm going to, I don't think he would mind. He is undergoing cancer treatment this week. That's where he is.
Okay.
He's battling lung cancer for the last two years.
Well, he's probably working too hard. I wish him the best, but he should not work so hard. But, and I wanted to add something that that gal reminded me of. We had an incident in our house years ago, and I brought it up at a question up at the Neighborhood Watch meeting, and Mr. Sutton told me that what happened, I was there, he said, "Oh, that's not what happened." Well, you know, again, who works for who? And how can somebody have the nerve to call me a liar when I was the person at home who was so-called the victim? That does not fly, and it's not right. Thank you.
Hi, Shirley Fowler, 1130 East Euclid Avenue. I moved in 60 years ago in December, and to my house right around the corner here. When I was younger, and just starting out to be a married lady, and cooking, and doing things like that, I accidentally left some grease on the stove to turn on while I went to check on my child. Well, when I come back, it was on fire. And not only that was on fire, but my cabinet was on fire, up above it. And so, I grabbed my telephone, walked outside, called the Fire Department. They were there in two minutes, literally, two minutes. And then, I thought, "Oh, my God, they're gonna bash the door down, they're gonna tear everything up coming in." But they didn't, and they just came in real calmly, put the fire out, and five minutes, my fire was gone. My cabinet was destroyed, so my husband turned it upside down, put it back on the wall. From the bottom, and I've used it, and it's still there today. But anyway, they were so fast, and many, many times, I've had to call the ambulances for my husband, who was, had leukemia. I've got really bad heart trouble. I can have a heart attack in just a second with just one artery in my heart. And I want somebody that's close, you know, that would come immediately, because a couple of times I called the ambulance, and we lost our ambulance service, which I wasn't happy about. I had to wait maybe three minutes for an ambulance when we had that, and then the Fire Department was right behind them. And so, now I had to wait, the last time I called, it was like a good 15, almost 20 minutes before they got there. So, and then, they would come for my husband, because he would have falls. He had leukemia, so he was sick off and on with things. He'd get pneumonia just overnight, and would not realize it, and he'd fall. So I would have to have the ambulance come. And it does take a while, quite a while, for them to get there now. You know, it's not like they're just, not like it was before, when they were just instant. And the Fire Department's the same way. I really respect the Heights. I don't want anything to do with Peoria, nothing. I don't like Peoria. I lived in the South End of Peoria for many years before I was married. But their services are lousy. I'm telling you, they're lousy. I'm telling you, they're lousy. Our, our street department is fabulous here. When Casey had the street department, I don't know how it's going to be now, but when Casey had it, everything was plowed, everything was taken care of, I never had a problem with anything. But in Peoria, I go over there to my mother's one day to help my mom and dad. We had a big snowfall. They do not do side streets. They were piled high with snow, and I had to walk through that snow just to get to my mom and dad's house and clean off the windows for my dad. And, and like I said, I've had heart trouble for 30 years, this is not new. But the doctors here are good, so they put me together and God's kept me alive. But I don't want to lose our fire department. I may be moving myself, I may be moving in with one of my children, but whoever buys my house, I want them to have a fire department that's right here. And my children live in the Heights, and their friends live in the Heights. They're all along that wall over there. Those are my children, they all went to high school together here, and, and we want them to have good services. You know, I just would never, I never would have lived anyplace else. And also, I know we've got a water issue, I would, I don't want to address that tonight, but I would like to know if we are going to talk about our water issue? Because when we first moved here, that water was fabulous. I'm not sure what that well has hit the top of, I don't know what, because I've got a terrible sulfur smell coming out of my sink when I turn it on and out of the shower, and how many other here people have a smell coming out of your showers and stuff? Yeah, yeah. It's terrible. It smells to me like sulfur, which comes from hell, and I'm thinking, "I don't want nothing to do with this." Have you hit the top of hell or something? I mean, I'm telling you, crazy. And what Cindy's daughter just said about Skyler, I can verify everything that woman's saying, because my sister lived right next door. Skyler Walker threatened them, I don't know how many times. My sister had a bad heart, and she wasn't afraid of him, because she knew she was dying anyway. And she, and she, she did die, she died two months ago. So, she just told him, "I'm not afraid of you," but he would threaten her, and he would say things to them like, "I'm going to kill you all." And what she's saying absolutely happened, because I, I was over there with my sister and saw a lot of that. And he had covers on the back of the porch, all covered up, and he was living outside. And he did not have permission for, to live there. And my sister was the one that called the owner of the house's mother and told her that he was over there causing all this trouble. She came over there and got him out and told you guys that he didn't have any right to be in that house. He did not have the right. But, and I know he, he finally got his commupence from the fire. I know he's in prison, so that's a good place, you know, for him, too. But anyway, I want Peoria Heights services. I want water, I want the road crew. Don't, don't go taking our road crew away, because we at least get our streets and alleys plowed. I want everything that you guys have got, because this is where we live. Peoria is not all that fantastic. So, I don't know why everybody's so excited about Peoria. And I heard on the radio one time where their fire department was in trouble also. So, do they want us to get extra money? Is that what they want? You know, because I was listening to that report, and they said they were having problems. So, maybe they want our extra $300,000 or whatever it was that was extra. So, we don't, we don't want it. We just want to be in the Heights, that's it.
Jay Gruber, 3814 North Monroe, Peoria Heights, Illinois. I am grateful to say that I have a small business here, and I want a local fire department. I have a number of things that I wanted to share. I did read most of the 79 pages, I think it was, of the audited financial statements. I would offer that we have an opportunity to potentially hire the fire department from Peoria for 300,000. I would like that not to go through potentially. Obviously, the people who vote are the ones who will decide this round, but I would share with you, and maybe not that, maybe some other portion, but we have what's called a qualified audit opinion. What it means is that the independent auditors, the auditors are independent, which is excellent, but they had to qualify their opinion because they couldn't say that internal controls were in good standing, because there wasn't enough separation of duties in the bookkeeping and financial reporting section of our numbers, basically. So, I would offer, I don't know that we need to have an independent accountant or bookkeeper look at our records all the time, but I would say that we need to do something about the internal controls. Hiring a bookkeeper that is not the same person who does the entries is usually what's done. Small businesses that care about it can do it. We're a small town, we can do it, too. I think it's probably a good time to do that. There's a lot of concern about the double role of one of the individuals. I noticed and was glad that we had a woman police officer. I have no idea why, my understanding is that she's not part of the team now. I have heard here tonight allegations of some aspect of, like ethnicity being a problem or being a diverse person is a problem to be on our police, police group. So, I just think that this would give us some excellent information about where our contracts are, where the different kinds of money go, and if there are, if everything's in good order. And I would share with you, it's usually in good order, and I am so hopeful, and I believe that it is in good order. But it's worth proving as, as we sit here and worry about, "How are we going to pay for the water and the fire department and the other things?" I would like to see some verification that we took the right steps that the, that we can. So, thank you so much. I have one other thing, excuse me, and I, I don't know, I'm an optimist. I am going to end with a compliment. I want to put a call out to the folks who are working on the corner by our building, and it is, let me think, it's TJ can use that big bucket like its fingers, so he's amazing. His team and the team that Chris Chandler supervises included, let's see, there's a Jordan, a Jim, a John. Did you get the Jays? There was TJ, too, right? And then Eric are the folks who were working on our little corner there, and I love the Heights group that's doing that, I believe that's Public Works. The other groups that I would like to see is just keeping the volunteer fire department and beefing them up. They had, they, they say that they've told us what they need. I think it's time we find a way to do it. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
My name, my name's David Reel, 1116 East Euclid. I'd like to start out by giving a shout-out to Officer Bowles. He's, he used to live behind me growing up. He's a police officer now, and I'd like to say my neighborhood is, is being patrolled right now. Before, my neighborhood wasn't being patrolled, I didn't think, not, not to the standard, not when I had a person living in a tent, defecating, peeing in his yard for two years. I called the police, I talked to Chief Sutton, everybody. It's during COVID, so he did get locked out of his house after they, they did actually foreclose on it. They finally got him locked out of the house, but he just moved outside, and his yard was a urinal, a shitter, whatever you want to call it. I had to smell that shit, you could, you could smell it coming down the street. Finally, he got out of there. I got a new tenant, it's really nice. The other thing is, Peoria is a shambles. Everything they touch falls apart. You look, a lot of things are bankrupt. Their fire department's closing stations, so I'm just wondering if the station closest to us is on another call, what's our response time going to be? Who knows? Who really knows? And they're, they're bankrupt, so basically, any money that we give them is going into the coffer. And that's going to pay pensions, past pensions, that's going to go however they distribute that. And, you know, they may close another station, because they're not handling their money right. And that's really, really upsets me about Peoria. If you watch, a lot of things are closing in Peoria. Things are moving into the Heights, but what scares me about what's moving into the Heights is all restaurants. It's all restaurants. And basically, that's minimum wage jobs. That's not big-time jobs. We have firemen, they want a big-time job. Let's give them a big-time job. Any fireman coming from Peoria is not going to be a Peoria Heights resident. It's against their bylaws. You can, you have to live in Peoria to be a Peoria fireman. So, we're, we're not going to get Peoria Heights people coming to service us. And that's all I want. I want Peoria Heights people serving us. That's why I gave a shout-out to Officer Bowles. He's a Peoria Heights person, lived behind me, now he's patrolling my neighborhood. He stopped and personally talked to me and, and said if I have any concerns to address them. He wasn't sure that I knew he was on the force, but I met him at the Taste of Peoria, Peoria Heights down here, and he'd forgotten, because that was like his first week and he was really busy. But I just want the closeness of, the closeness of a village, because we don't have a village now, right now. I don't think we have the village, and this is the village. We're coming together, so look out.
Public comment going once, twice, public comments closed. Thank you all for being here, I think we're listening, and appreciate you all being here. Okay, so we would be at old business, we have an action item, rescission of July 18, 2023 action on the fire department options. Trustee Weisenberg, going to ask for a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to rescind the July 18 action on fire department options.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Just before we get into discussion, counsel, would you explain what's happening here and why it wasn't proper at the last meeting?
Sure. It's real simple, the Open Meetings Act requires that any action that's final action that the board takes has to be listed on the agenda for the reason that you just saw, so that people know what's on the agenda, they know if they need to come to the meeting to address the board. You can't do it, take final action on an item that the public doesn't know is going to be voted on. So, at the July 18 meeting, the agenda did not have specifically listed, I'm sorry, we're rescinding July 18, it was the August. One meeting where a motion to rescind was made, and that agenda, August 1, did not include an action item based on the fire department options that have been discussed. So, this is just putting it back on the agenda so that the Open Meetings Act is complied with, and, and now we can have a vote in the public where the item is actually listed on the agenda.
Thank you for that good explanation. All right, Trustee Weisenberg, you get to start.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll keep this short. After we had voted on the July 18 action on the Peoria Heights Fire Department, and as I started talking with community members, you know, the July 18 agenda made no mention of Peoria, which my understanding of the Open Meetings Act is that the agendas have to be as descriptive as possible. So, we, so the people weren't aware that we were voting on an option that was going to send hundreds, potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars to the city of Peoria to provide fire service. And as I spoke with constituents and neighbors, and, you know, just started to let the citizens know, you know, what we were going on, try to be as transparent as possible, it became quickly evident to me that most people understood the, the challenges we faced with the fire department, they understood the changing nature of volunteerism, they understood all that. But what they couldn't understand is why we didn't take that money and invest in the fire department here in the Village of Peoria Heights. So, as I started, you know, having more and more of those discussions, it became evident to me at least that maybe we weren't on the right path. So, that's what led to my decision on August 1 to rescind what we had done. So, hopefully, I have the support here yet tonight to rescind it. I think the citizens have come out here twice now, during dinnertime, leaving time with their families to really express the fact that they, too, understand the challenges we face. These are pretty smart people, they've lived here a long time, they understand the challenges we face, and they understand that the fire department needs resources, they're underfunded, and they really want us to invest their taxpayer money in the fire department.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
I just have a question for counsel. Mr. Walton, as far as the actions, last meeting, with it not being on the agenda, with us taking that action, has that placed the village in any legal or financial jeopardy being a violation of the Open Meetings Act?
I don't believe so, but I cannot answer that question conclusively. I can tell you, the action was void.
As far as the motion?
For our purpose, that's, that's what's important.
As far as the motion, Trustee Wigginton?
For the actions, yeah, because we passed a...
I'll take responsibility for that. I mean, Trustee Weisenberg made the motion. I wasn't 100% sure, I thought since it wasn't on the agenda, it wasn't proper, but honestly, without counsel here, did not know the answer to that. I thought the best course of action was to let it happen and then let the attorney figure it out afterwards, and, and so that's, I, I could have ruled it out of order, but I thought, I thought it would be better to let the, the action happen and then figure it out after that. So, I'll take full responsibility for that.
My opinion would be that it was not an intentional Open Meetings Act violation, but I'm 100% certain that it was a void action, it had no legal effect.
And just so I'm clear, the motion is to rescind the July 18 action of fire options. Clerk Turner, would you read back what the option, the specific thing we're trying to revoke right now?
Yes, you'll have to give me a minute, so if you have any other comments, please continue.
was to preserve the Peoria Heights Volunteer Fire Department and explore contracting with the city of Peoria.
Okay, so we are revoking to preserve the volunteer fire department and explore a contract with Peoria. That's, that's the, is, is that the motion?
We're not going to, we're not going to explore a contract.
You're, you're twisting words, Trustee Wigginton. We are, we are rescinding the...
I'm sorry, I'm just asking, we're revoking the motion that passed, which was labeled "to support the volunteer fire department and explore a contract with Peoria." Is that your motion?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Most definitely.
So, in order to support the volunteer fire department, we were exploring a contract with Peoria. We never said we were going to contract with Peoria. By taking this action, I do think we are foreclosing... By taking this action, I do think we are foreclosing our options about moving forward. I worry, I worry about foreclosing options and not having all options on the table. So my concern is that we have this lack of forward momentum for our Volunteer Fire Department. Just so that we are clear, we have our budget, which was presented to us for this meeting. And at no time in the 106-year history of the Peoria Heights Fire Department has it been more well-funded as it is today. The budget for the Volunteer Fire Department is $400,337. There has never, in a time in the history of this Fire Department, has it been better funded as it is right now.
Not enough.
Trustee Wigginton, just a minute. Hold it. Trustee Wigginton, I just want to say...
I'll continue.
I think the board listened to everyone respectfully making comments. Please, let him speak.
Take the mic up and for everything.
So I'll, I'll just say that our department is as best as funded as it ever has been, but if we're still not meeting the requirements of our citizens, then we need to find other options. So looking at, I had a citizen come up to me, because I wasn't at this last meeting, but Chief Walters. Chief Walters' comments about not knowing what questions to ask really, really set with me. So I, I went out to try to understand what questions I should ask. And so, one of the questions that I think needs to be addressed immediately is auto mutual aid. Auto mutual aid needs to be addressed now. Because if we are calling other departments for assistance and they are going beyond another department, a department has to drive through Peoria to get to a burning fire, then that needs to be addressed. So little things like this, I think, can be fixed. I saw, just looking back at the numbers that were presented to me by a firefighter, a retired firefighter, we had multiple calls where we're reaching out to, to fight our own fires, we're reaching out to mutual aid for West Peoria to come help, to Dunlap Fire Department to come help, West Peoria to come fire. We're not even requesting Peoria. We're not requesting, auto mutual aid means the first on the list is Dunlap.
No, it doesn't.
It means Dunlap.
No, it does not.
Can I speak? Come on, please, let, let's be at least respectful. There's disagree, difference of opinion here, but let, let's let people speak. Matt Nard Dalton, can you give a quick answer to?
So to, to address the auto aid, Chief Thompson and I, when we initially set this up, it is to address fire alarms for high life hazard buildings with high occupants. It's my understanding that Chief Thompson approached Peoria initially, and we were told no, call the Mavis box. So from there, we then approached Dunlap to assist us below the hill for high life hazard fire alarms, and West Peoria for above the hill for high life hazard fire alarms. We asked Peoria first, and was told no.
So, so, so Chief Shaw, let me ask you this. So as the status quo is, because I guess your understanding is Peoria told us no?
That's, that's my understanding, yes.
Okay. So to your understanding, they told us no, but to respond to this high hazard, high occupancy, Dunlap has to come from its firehouses to our...
Correct. Correct. But these are for just fire alarms. You know, for, you know, an alarm goes off, you know, there's smoke in the building, it's food on the stove, a water flow alarm goes off, we call for initial help right out of the bat. When we arrive on scene, if we need more help, we'll pull a Mavis box, and then Peoria comes with the Mavis box.
Okay, so you arrive on scene, and then you pull the Mavis box if you need more?
If we need more help. Because most of the time, nine times out of 10, a fire alarm, we are deferred from initially because it's either maintenance, testing, or some other effect that it's not an actual fire.
So, so... Ponevord or Mayor, Mayor, what does this have to do with the contract to Peoria? That's what my motion is, is rescinding...
I don't disagree, trustee Weisenberg.
I, I would love to have a conversation about the Fire Department, but I don't see how it's relevant to the Peoria contract.
All right, but, but we've, we've listened to a lot of people tonight, and I would ask you to let trustee Wigginton to continue.
Thank you, Mayor. So Chief Shaw, so I, I want to understand, and this is, kind of gets down to my understanding as well, if we have a fire like we had in January, which was below the hill, there was a, there was a gentleman who had a pizza...
Correct.
On the stove, and he left the house while the pizza was on the stove, or in the stove, in the oven, and it called on fire.
Correct.
So we got the alarm call. Eight minutes later, we left. Eight minutes later, we arrived. At that point, when you arrived at the fire, is that when you pulled the Mavis box?
For that particular instance, no. When we, PD reported the scene, on scene first, house is fully engulfed. Before we even left the station, we pulled a Mavis box.
Okay. So that's, at that point, we had Peoria responding, Limestone responding, Dunlap responding, and West Peoria.
And Chili Coffee.
And Chili, okay. So in certain instances, who can help pull that, or who can alert you, the Fire Department?
The PD does. If the PD gets there before us and they tell us the house is fully engulfed before we get there, we'll pull a Mavis box en route before we even leave the station. If we arrive on scene and it's something we can handle, we'll handle it ourselves, or we'll pull it after the fact when we need more help as it, you know, as it need arises.
Okay.
That's the point of a Mavis box, is to use it as needed.
So with the Mavis box, if we're pulling that, that's when Peoria can respond?
Correct. And they respond on the first alarm.
They do.
They respond, but they respond at the exact same time the other departments do.
So to our public comments earlier, why aren't we pulling the Mavis box rather than asking for mutual aid from Dunlap?
For the auto, auto aids?
Yes.
Because we, as my understanding from Chief Thompson, we approached them initially, and Peoria said no.
Even to a Mavis box?
No, they said to pull a Mavis box if we needed it, but they would not respond auto aid to a fire alarm.
Okay.
So that's when we approached Dunlap and West Peoria.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it, trustee Weisenberg? Or trustee Wigginton? All right, anyone else?
Yeah, it's not, what we're looking to do is, the people here do not want to give money to Peoria. If they're getting 400,000, we're giving them 400,000, and it's the best they ever had, well evidently it's not enough, and we need to take this money, this 300,000 or whatever, and keep it in Peoria Heights. The heck with Peoria, because they're, they're, they're closing fire departments, and we need to invest in our, in Peoria Heights, in our, in our community.
I just want to say that, in my opinion, by rescinding this vote, we're prevented from accurately comparing all the options and hard numbers. And therefore, I am not changing my vote this evening, even though I know, or probably assume that we will be moving in a different direction. I think that you, Mayor, said the most important thing is we need to get a chief hired immediately who can assess and evaluate what's going on, and after that, I'm hopeful that we can find a framework that we can implement.
Anyone else?
Trustee Wigginton, to your point of rescinding without getting all of the information, I just would like to add to that, that, you know, I have been put on record stating that I would look at all possible scenarios. So there is a part of me that would love to know just what the Peoria number is, so I had all of the facts, right? Like, I am big on knowing all the facts, and by having their actual number, that provides me with all of the facts. So in that regard, I understand where you're coming from. I feel that my hesitancy to vote in that direction is for a couple of reasons. One, I would not want my time to be wasted. I feel that we dedicate a lot of time to this position, and by voting in favor of getting that number from them, I feel like I'm essentially saying to the City Council of Peoria and their, you know, their Fire Department, like, I'll waste your time to find out what these numbers are, yet I'm going to vote no, no matter what you come back at me with, right? So I feel like I have a whole thought process as far as that goes with it. The other thing is, when we voted on this exact topic, the way that lined up was that we had to deny what we'll call the Wigginton Plan in order to even discuss the Weisenberg Plan. Therefore, if we didn't like either of the options, we were just left with no choice at all. So I feel that if I vote to get the Peoria number, not only do I feel like that's against, like, my conscience, but then I'm scared to be backed into a corner, that that, like, then that's the option we're going with, right? Because initially, when we sat here and voted on this, we had to vote one option down to talk about the other option. And I don't want to be in that situation where it's, we have to vote one thing down in order to get to the next topic. So for that reason, I can't vote to continue to move forward with the Peoria, with getting, even getting numbers from Peoria.
If I could, Mayor?
Yeah.
I think Peoria is pretty clear on their numbers. Obviously, it had gone before their board. I actually think it would have been more expensive than what Chief Holberger proposed to us. But we already know at a minimum, that was going to be $1,600 per engine per response. Those were the Peoria numbers. I think they're a little low, because I don't think that's even cost for them. They, their Fire Department, I think their annual budget is 300, no, $36.6 million is what they spend on their Fire Department. So getting a fire engine for $1,600 response is a better deal than the citizens of Peoria get. So I think that number was artificially low, but I'll take Chief Holberger at his word that that's what they would be at. So we already know the numbers for Peoria. What we didn't know is the structure of the auto aid, who would be incident commander. I mean, those are the things that I understand are being worked out with the contract. So trustee Wigginton is right, we do spend more on the Fire Department than when I got into office in 2019. I think the budget then was 296,000. But what's, what's been lost to trustee Wigginton is we are behind the eight ball. We're about a decade behind all the other Fire Departments in providing duty crews. If you look at the budgets of all the other departments, they probably wouldn't be able to operate the $400,000, because they have duty crews. They have paid staff. We had a part-time full, we had a part-time chief and a full-time assistant chief, but that's not enough. That, as Mr. Carlson alluded to earlier, that's not what they've been asking for for years. They've wanted a duty crew. We just haven't provided the funding to get them there. So yeah, 407,000 is not a small number, and I understand that we've got to spend the people's money wisely, but the Fire Department says they need a duty crew. That's what they need, and it is going to cost more. I think ultimately, it'll be cheaper than the Peoria route. I think funding Peoria for all calls was over a million dollars at one point. I can, I forget what Chief said, but it was over, it was well over a million dollars. I think we can do that a lot cheaper here in the Village of Peoria Heights and have a crew, provides much better customer service and service. Thanks, Mayor.
Did you want to respond? Yeah, if I may. So I think one thing, and this, I think this has to stop immediately, is, you know, regardless of the badge on the, on the chest or the patch on the sleeve, I think all of the responding firefighters, we have to refrain really from calling, you know, whatever their, the firefighters' departments are, or the unions that represent them. There have been some derogatory statements about certain departments and their unions. I think that has to stop. I don't consider firefighters or their unions a cancer. I consider everyone heroes. They are responding. So regardless of, whether it's Peoria Heights Fire Department, Peoria Fire Department, West Peoria Fire Department, or Dunlap, or Chili, or wherever, they're responding. So I appreciate all of our firefighters that show up time and time again to protect lives and property. My concern, again, is just the lack of forward momentum. One of the things that I appreciate Mr. Mayor stating is that trustee Weisenberg has actively reached out to over, and received over 200 signatures, as you said, at our August 1st meeting, trustee Weisenberg, regarding a Fire Protection District. I applaud trustee Weisenberg for doing that and reaching out and getting those signatures. I just would feel more comfortable if I knew really what's going on with that route as well before foreclosing another. So do we have any forward momentum on a Fire Protection District right now?
Thank you, trustee Wigginton, but that is a citizen-led effort, so I don't have anything to add at this point. That's not part of my official capacity here. There's a group of citizens that opposed your Wigginton Plan that are collecting those signatures. So I don't have an update for you on that.
Well, I appreciate that it is a little disturbing not having a plan moving forward, but, you know, looking back at our July 18th meeting, where trustee Weisenberg, you reluctantly labeled your plan the Weisenberg Plan, and enthusiastically labeled mine the Wigginton Plan, I, I would say that we, we do need to have a plan. And so if the citizens are moving forward with a Fire Protection District, well, that's a plan. And I, I think if trustee Weisenberg, if, if you're leading that citizen effort, and you said last, the last meeting, you've gotten 200 signatures, well, I applaud you on your effort, and I look forward to that plan. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to...
One more thing, Mayor.
All right.
I think it's about 2:50 now. But I opposed the Weisenberg Plan label. It was actually the plan the Fire Department submitted to me. And if I remember correctly, your, your plan had zero support from the Fire Department. The plan I submitted had complete support of the Fire Department. What they needed is a duty crew. What they need is a duty crew, what they've been asking for is a duty crew. I presented that plan. I presented the cheapest, most fiscally conservative option. I understand that might not be where we need to be. We need more people. The Mayor had made that very clear, that we need more people. But most definitely was not the Weisenberg Plan. It was a Peoria Fire Department plan, and I look forward to working with the Peoria Fire Department and the village administration to build out the duty crew. That is the forward momentum we should be working towards.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your comments. We're going to have plenty of time in the future to talk about all of this, but in my opinion, counsel, you, correct me if you disagree, I think the motion before us is to unwind, I don't know if that's the best word, of action taken by the board that will put us back to square one where we look at...
That's exactly right.
All right. Madam Clerk, Colerald.
Trustee DeBoer.
Aye.
Trustee Gutt.
Aye.
Trustee Kazan.
Nay.
Trustee Wigginton.
Nay.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
All right, so that, that passes. Any other old business come from the board? Let's get right into new business then. The first is the acceptance of resignation of trustee Mark Goff. We've heard the letter of recognition. I would ask for a motion to accept the resignation.
I make a motion to accept the resignation of Mark Goff with regret.
Thank you, trustee Gutt. All right. Any other discussion or comment on the motion? Madam Clerk, Colerald.
Trustee DeBoer.
Aye.
Trustee Gutt.
Aye.
Trustee Kazan.
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton.
Nay.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next is approval of Petter Cab Business License with Peoria Petty Cab LLC. Trustee DeBoer, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the Petty Cab Business License to Peoria Petty Cab LLC.
A second, please.
Second.
All right, go ahead. Trustee DeBoer.
Mayor, I would like to apologize, I don't have an extensive amount of information on this, but I'm, from what I understand, Peoria Petty Cab is just looking for a license for this Petty Cab to be in our, like, downtown district. We did pass an ordinance allowing Petty Cabs, so this would just be to release the license for it.
Yes, thank you.
Is this the man that we met with in the office?
Is this the man that we met with in the office a few weeks ago, and he's like a one?
I believe, yeah, and wants to do tours.
Yes, yes. Okay.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the board.
Trustee DeBoer.
Aye.
Trustee Gutt.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Wiggington.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next is the Discover Peoria update. Trustee DeBoer.
Okay, so most of you know that you've had tons of questions about our Discover Peoria contract, and Trustee Kazam and I are so fortunate that we both do get to sit and get our quarterly review updates from the Discover Peoria administration. So they are here tonight to provide you with basically almost the same kind of report that Trustee Kazam and I get to, that we get to sit through. I felt like this would help answer all the questions that we have, and obviously, this is their passion, so I think that they could do a better job explaining it to you than what I am able to do. So Trustee Kazam and I did just meet with Ashley within the last week or so, and they agreed to come to be able to share this report with us as well. Yeah.
All right. JD, I see you out there and your team. Come forward, please. If you don't mind, move the pony and him around just a little so they catch you at home, too, and just tell us who you brought with you tonight.
Absolutely. I'll let you hand these out. Here, Al. Yes. Good evening. JD Dofonso, I'm JD Dofonso, and the president and CEO of the Peoria Area Convention and Visitors Bureau, shortened Discover Peoria. With me is our vice president of marketing, Al Benway, and our project manager, Ashley Hildebrandt. We are incredibly pleased to have a partnership like we do with Peoria Heights and Mayor Phelan, and to the trustees, thank you for your continued support. To the board member of our board, Sarah, thank you for your continued participation and efforts. Trustee Kazam as well, thank you for your help and assistance in making sure that we do our best in partnership to promote what we see as an absolute gem in the Peoria area, which is Peoria Heights. And so we're here to happily answer questions and elaborate a little bit more on our work and what we do for the seven counties we represent in central Illinois, and particularly in partnership with Peoria Heights, as we have with nine other communities within that seven-county area. So with, before you is a report we put together, a quarterly review, in which Ashley helps put together with members of our team. They are many, they're much the experts that put these efforts forward, and so if I step aside, they'll be able to answer a little bit more on just some of these reports, as well the work that we're doing behind the scenes in the past and moving forward as well. So I want to thank you again, at least as we open up here, for the opportunity to serve Peoria Heights and all your residents here as well. So with that, I won't take up too much time, and I'll let my team introduce themselves and open the floor for any questions and discussion.
Thank you, JD.
Hello, all. Ashley Hildebrandt, project manager at the Peoria Area Convention and Visitors Bureau. I am happy to walk you through this report, as I do with Trustee DeBoer and Trustee Kazam, but if that takes up time, if you just have certain questions that you'd like information addressed, I'm happy to do that as well.
Why don't you give us an overview, because you're an important partner of ours. We spend, we're a full partner now, invest a lot of money, so I think not only for the board, but a lot of people watch from home. You've got an audience here, so please give us an overview of what you do.
Wonderful. So we start off with this quarterly review infographic. It basically sums up the last quarter, which was April through June of 2023, the types of promotions that we did for Peoria Heights specifically. If you look at the top in the orange, it shows 16 blog mentions, 19 Facebook content, 11 Instagram content, 5 TV mentions, 6 newsletter mentions, 2 Twitter content, 35 events listed, 5 leisure publications, and 36 social stories. So again, when I review this information, we then discuss what those all include. If you kind of switch to this next page here on the top, it starts giving supporting evidence of those numbers. So our 16 blogs were listed here on the second page under all blogs featuring Peoria Heights, so you can see what those articles were. We have a whole staff that creates that content. We also have local writers for us who live in the communities that help write content as well. We also show the page views that each of those articles received on our website. Our social media content, we kind of grouped together a bit. What we focus on is the increase in the viewership on our social stories. We now have about 1,500 viewership on one social story. For those of you who aren't tech savvy or aren't on social media a whole lot, a social story is up for just 24 hours, and on average, we're having 1,500 people view those. So where you see 36 social stories for Peoria Heights, those were events, those were business shout-outs that we put on our social page for people to see. Going down, we have top four business listings. Those we like to highlight on all of our quarterly reports, which businesses are getting viewed most on our website. As you can see, it's fired up. Your Pedal Party, Good Tequila's Mexican Grill, and Generation's Candle Company. Overall, of all the hospitality and tourism entities that we have on our website, the total views on those listings for this quarter was 3,521. Correct. Those are just the Peoria Heights hospitality and tourism entities on our website. If you go down to that red section where it shows blogs and listings, you can see that last quarter, from January through March, all those listing views only totaled 2,258. So they increased over 1,000. We are working diligently and daily on increasing traffic flow to our website, getting more viewership of the Peoria Heights businesses and entities, and the events happening in Peoria Heights. Of those 16 blogs, we break that down, they included a total views of 8,059 views, which is, we think, pretty awesome. Our social, sorry, sorry. Our social media has gained following. This quarter, it does show 19,357. That is across all of our social media platforms. I didn't have the comparison number listed here. Sorry. But last quarter, it was only 16,000, so we have gained traction. June was a record-breaking month for us, for our website views. We had 88,000 unique page, unique users to our website. So in doing this and creating this content and sharing stories and events from Peoria Heights, that is shown to a large amount of people in this area. The next couple pages in this report are supporting of that first infographic. It shows the newsletters that were featured. It shows a complete list of the hospitality and tourism businesses in Peoria Heights that we have on our website.
I don't know. Sorry, our AV guy is not here either tonight, so we can't assist you.
I'm not moving. If there's ever a business that you don't see listed on here, or something that you do see that isn't accurate, we always appreciate that feedback as well. The next page looks like this. This was the 36 events, I believe is what the number was, listed for Peoria Heights during this last quarter. I did highlight in orange the events that our team submitted on behalf of entities in Peoria Heights. The ones not highlighted were ones submitted by the entities in Peoria Heights. The last few pages of this is what I enter. This is a raw report, so all of the information that we do on our website, on our social media, that gets entered into a document, and I take all that information and I enter it into our CRM on the backside of our website, which generates this. So we don't have to go through this ugly report. We make it into more of an infographic, easy to digest, easier to ask questions.
Ashley, could you share more information on how the calendar works, how that's generated, and how the, just because what's on that maybe doesn't, the calendar doesn't reflect the infographic?
Yes. I'll have, I'll answer that a little bit more.
Yeah. So with our calendar of events, it is open for anyone in, we'll just go anyone, anyone to submit any type of event. When you go to submit an event, you can tag, it's the easiest way to explain this, you can tag as much of the area as you want to be able to represent that event. So the events that we put in, like our team specifically, we're very cautious of what we're tagging, because that populates on our front of end, or front end, if that makes sense. So, but if you're, if you're an everyday community person, you're tagged, sorry, I'm so sorry.
No.
Is it me? It's me. I'm so sorry. No? Should we put it up? Where's the speaker?
Could be getting some feedback. Maybe if somebody would put your microphones up, too, maybe that might help. So, thanks.
All right, guys, I'm so sorry, guys.
No. Go ahead.
I'll do, oh, gosh. You're all awake now. Yeah, I forgot. I forgot.
Submitting events and tags.
Yeah, calendar events, tagging, all the good stuff. Okay, so with tagging, how it works, if it's an everyday person, similar to social media when you're tagging in a post, you're hashtagging this, hashtagging that, that hashtag attracts things that are happening, right? So our team would, in an event, gosh, I'm explaining this terribly. I'm so sorry. No, let me. I don't know. Hold on. So, golly, that's the easiest way to put it. Okay, so with each event specifically, with these tags, if I was Morton Pumpkin Festival, I would tag all of our surrounding region, because I want all of that region to come to that Morton Pumpkin Festival, regardless. That is a community entity putting in an event. Our team, when we're putting in an event, we're being very specific of where that event is, and so we're tagging specifically on where their location is. So that's how everything is being tagged on the back end, the CRM that Ashley had spoken to. On the front of, on the front end of our website, it curates all of the tags to populate throughout each widget within our website. So as an example, on the Peoria Heights landing page, we'll have places or events, just events specifically in Peoria Heights. It will curate any tag that's being happening in the background to populate. So even if Morton put in an event and they tagged Peoria Heights because they want people from Peoria Heights to attend it, it will show up in that widget. Very recently, and I mean very recently, within the last week, we've redone our website. So in the month leading up to this launch, we've had to pause all adjustments to the site in order to be able to pull over and recreate a WordPress site. So now we have full control over what those tags are, or at least we will in the next week, when all the kinks get worked out, fingers crossed. So what happens on that is when there's a widget of events in Peoria Heights that will be on the Peoria Heights landing page, which everyone can go to discoverpeoria.com, it will now curate all of the tags that are specifically to Peoria Heights. So our team is now diligently going in, being able to, even if Morton Pumpkin Fest tagged Peoria Heights in this because they want the attendee, we untag it now, even though that event is in Morton. It won't be tagged as Peoria Heights, so therefore, the widget that curates all those events won't show up in the Peoria Heights event. Does that make, did I explain that terribly? I'm so sorry.
No, but that has been a question in the past. I think Trustee Wiggington had some questions about events we posted that weren't necessarily taking place in Peoria Heights.
Also, on the back end, speaking to that, I'm able to filter, on these reports, it is only events happening in Peoria Heights. So on the website, as we've gone through this transition, there are other events showing from different communities. On the back end, when I pull these numbers and pull that report, I filter out the city the event is happening in, which is now going to appear in that report and show all the events that happened that were listed for accuracy.
So the number's not being calculated by the tags, it's being calculated specifically on the location, which Ashley has to manually put in our back end to calculate the accurate data and analytics that you guys get in your report, if that makes sense. So even if something may have gone through and it shows up on the calendars under Peoria Heights, that's not reflected in these unless that event is in Peoria Heights. Thank you, that's great. Sorry. Sorry.
Are there any other questions?
Questions? Just a quick one, and a lot of people might be wondering why all this is important. I know lots of cities in the region invest a lot of money into what you're doing. I know the governor has made tourism a high priority. Can you help quantify the return on some of these investments and what tourism actually brings to the area?
Yes, great question. I was just down in Dallas, Texas, a few weeks ago for Destinations International's annual conference, of which I get to tout our partnership with Peoria Heights in a couple sessions. However, with there, we got to learn a little bit more about that direct impact. I will tell you that specifically for the state of Illinois, we'll be releasing economic impact numbers, as the administration and DCEO has alerted us, towards the end of this month is the timeframe. So we'll have some updated numbers for you as to what that impact looks like. We can regularly run destination or economic impact calculators based off event information that is provided to us by event planners or conventions that come to town. I can tell you that, you know, typically, so depending where we want to go, high level, prior to 2020, the most recent kind of, before the pandemic, as we come out of this still recovering in high numbers of recovery, I can almost compare us a little bit before I see the numbers at the end of this month, what numbers look like in 2019. For our area, in which we represent, that seven-county area, we generate about $656 million of domestic spend through travel. Now, that is a big, big number, right? That is the domino effect of what domestic travel means for the region. What that translates to is more than $17 million in direct local taxes. Those are the numbers we like to report. That's the accuracy number from hotel, restaurants, sales taxes that come in from the domestic travel. So prior to the pandemic, this region, of which Peoria County is the leader in that category, followed by Tazewell County, that you have close to 9.3 million in those numbers that were direct local taxes from domestic travel and tourism. I'm anxious to see where the numbers lie at the end of this year. I can tell you that hotel occupancy in the area is up, and the restaurant spend is leading all categories as well, seemingly as well. So for communities such as Peoria Heights, I know the restaurants are driving a large impact towards recovery, of which Peoria Heights is a desired destination, particularly in the region, and for our visitors to come and enjoy. From tournaments like Ledgestone, the professional disc golf Ledgestone tournament, that brings in 2,200 athletes to the area and 4,000 spectators, you're looking at over the week, $100,000 in direct local taxes to the communities that are hosting. So more numbers to come out. For specific events, we can be happy to work with particularly event planners to understand the numbers that are coming in for an event, and run those through the Destinations International Economic Impact Calculator at the same time. We do want to make sure we have correct information to run conservative reports, to make sure numbers are accurate when reporting. So when tourism, according to Longwoods International, another industry-leading research and analytical company, according to Longwoods International, when tourism is humming and on all cylinders, as we seem to be, it translates into, on average, about $400 of savings per household of reduced taxes needed. So that's implying that without tourism coming into your communities, it's technically, it could save households about $400 per year on taxes not having to be raised in certain scenarios. So that's a broad number across, but those are industry numbers that we can hopefully provide through our research and development efforts as well. If that helps paint a little bit of a picture, I can always go on and find more information for you.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that with us, and we're excited about our partnership with all of you, so appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate all you guys and look forward to our continued partnership. Thank you.
Thank you.
And incidentally, I know it was mentioned earlier about the number of restaurants here, and so we have become a public body that's basically funding most of our businesses in police and fire and public works, et cetera, based on sales tax. And thanks to this board, we've been able to lower the property tax levy the last couple of years, and I hope we can continue to do that. So again, thank you. Trustee DeBoer, anything else you want to talk about on that? Okay. Okay, so we would be at approval of public works vehicle purchase in the amount of $47,797.26 to DeLong Ford Incorporated, in the absence of Trustee Goff. I'd ask someone to approve this, please.
I make a motion to approve the purchase of $47,797.26.
All right. Jim, welcome. I'm gonna look over there to you in Chris's absence. Jim Bartley, our foreman in public works, so can you explain what we're happening, we're doing here?
Adding another vehicle. We have two trucks now.
We have two trucks now, but they're both half-time, two-wheel drive, incapable of plowing. So this, a big part of this will be winter aid to continue to take care of cul-de-sacs, alleys, smaller lots, things like that. That'll be a big impact. And we're trying to be more diverse with the crew, so in the warm weather, it lets us spread ourselves a little thinner to multitask.
So this, this is replacing a Ford Transit little.
Yes, we did get rid of one of the vans.
So I see that we're trading in that for, for F-350, so.
Correct.
This is a big upgrade over a Transit van.
We still have one of the vans that uses a water vehicle.
Okay.
But yeah, the truck provides us a lot.
So we're gonna put a plow in front of that?
That's correct.
Okay. Good. Anyone else? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeBoer?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Exam?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, well, before we move on, Jim, anything else on the Public Works that needs to be reported on?
I would like to apologize for stepping out. We had a Peoria dispatch call. We have a resident with a broken water line, so it's their side of the water line, but the shut-off we're having trouble with, so I have two guys.
I didn't even notice you left, so.
Stepped out immediately.
Okay. And I think you were part of that compliment we got earlier tonight from Jay Gruber. All right. Let's move on to discussion of purchase of an EMS equipment. Trustee Wigginton?
Yes, so I was approached by Assistant Chief, Deputy Chief?
Assistant Chief.
Thanks, sorry. I was Assistant Chief Dalton here on the, on a purchase of fire equipment, and he came me the rundown of what's going on, but I think, you know, you would better be served with explaining it, so Don, do you mind take, take?
Absolutely. I don't know if I want to take the risk with the microphone, can everybody hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I had approached Trustee Wigginton about purchasing a LifePac 15 cardiac monitor. So for anybody who's not familiar with that, basically, if anybody's watched emergency or any of the medical shows, thing they put on the chest and shock people with, that's that. But what this does is we are looking at a way to better serve our citizens. So right now, as was said earlier, and we've been upfront with this, we're currently certified at the emergency medical responder level, allows us some basic first aid, some very basic medications. Obviously, we can do CPR, we can use an AED to restart heart rhythms if they're in a rhythm that we can fix, things of that nature. So I have been making a push for the last two years to upgrade our level of care. I think we're at a point now where we can finally try to move forward with that, move us up to the EMT basic level. So that allows us some more advanced care that we can provide to our citizens, that allows us to do what's called 12-lead cardiac monitoring, which is what this piece of equipment would do, which allows us to obtain that information, transmit it either to the hospital or to the incoming paramedics, they can more quickly identify issues, and we can more quickly treat our patients. There are even some interventions that we can do at our level based on that information being interpreted early. There are five of us currently that are certified EMTs, there's a bulk of about 12 or 13 of us that are EMRs. So we do have plenty of staff there. We do have one incoming, so that'll bring us to six. So we'd be able to use that equipment. I have had several of our EMRs approach me and ask about taking the EMT basic class, but they don't see the need for it if we can't provide that level of care, which I can understand, that's a little bit of a commitment, especially for someone that's going to be doing this after their full-time job. So that's what we're looking at for this. I may have brushed over some of the things that may have answered some of your guys' questions, I apologize, I'm not the best at doing presentations of this nature, this will be my first one, so please ask me any questions that you may have.
Don, I, I think what we should start with is the dollars and cents. I think from what you found, you went out and found, actually, from what I understand, a pretty good deal for this equipment. Can you explain that?
I can. So we had originally reached out to Stryker, that's the company that makes this equipment, to get a quote on a brand-new cardiac monitor. So the response back from that was $37,500, and they currently have a backlog of about a year. So they would have to send us what they described as a loner unit, which, talking around, is a unit that has been heavily used and might work, might not, until we can get the $38,000 piece of equipment that we asked for. So doing some research with other departments in the area who have obviously had to replace equipment and purchase new equipment, we found a retailer out of New York that refurbishes this equipment, they have certified technicians that go through, repair this equipment, and ensure that it's certified, and they warranty their equipment. And the cost on that was $22,500. I don't think that accounts for shipping, I'm sure that'd be $20, $30 there, but, and then we would have that equipment within a week.
And, and Don, you, you also, correct me if I'm wrong, but you also said you have room in the budget for it as well?
That is correct. So in the most recent budget printout that I got, which was on June 20th, we do have a capital outlay item for new equipment that this would fall under. That account currently has $49,237. As of June 20th, only $349 was used. That may be a little bit more now based on expenditures, but we should still be well within that limit.
Thank you, Don. That's it.
Any other?
I have a, I do a question. So, please excuse my ignorance, but if we have this machine and we have some people that are EMTs, but some people that are still EMR, how does that work? Like, so if no EMTs respond, then we can't use, we cannot utilize that equipment, or what?
That is correct, and I appreciate you bringing that up because that actually brings something to mind that I also wanted to bring up. So part of this program that we're doing when we get this equipment is instead of going to a full EMT basic program, which would require an EMT on every single call, we're going to be doing a stepping stone here called a infield upgrade that allows us to operate simultaneously with both EMRs and EMTs. If an EMT is available, they can take the additional equipment, we can function as an, as an EMT agency. If there's not an EMT available on that call, we can still function as an EMR agency, we can still provide that level of care. So our goal within the next two years is to get, I'd say, 90% of the department trained as EMTs, including those that are currently EMR, getting them moved up to EMTs.
Um, I'm sorry, did I give you that?
So I did a quick look at our call volume based on a question from Trustee Wigginton, which, wonderful question, I hadn't even thought about that side of it. So looking at that right now, based on our current response volume, there's probably about, I had originally said 15 to 20, but I would say it's more like 15 to 25% of those calls where there was not an EMT on that call, so it was just EMRs. So that equipment would not be utilized. With that training program moving forward with two years, I expect that to drop to 1% to 5%, especially if we get, if we get this field upgrade, one of the requirements that we would push for if we moved forward with a duty crew option, they would need to have an EMT basic license. That way, anybody we bring in will have at least an EMT basic license to function on that duty crew. And that would also include getting people who may currently work in that capacity trained up to that, and they've, they've stepped forward and have said that they would be willing to do that. So that would be my hope for that, but you are correct, if there was not an EMT available, they would still function just as they do now as an EMR, but they wouldn't be able to use the upgraded piece of equipment.
How long is the EMT training? Do you know?
So to put in comparison, EMRs go through 40 to 56 hours of training. 40 hours is the actual requirement, most classes do additional training to either 52 or 56 hours. EMTs, in comparison, the requirement is 120 hours. I believe my class, when I took it in 2009, was 160. There are some that do 180. It's all still within scope of practice, but they like to try to devote additional time to some of those different topics. Most EMT classes will run five, six months, as opposed to two, three months for an EMR class. There is a little bit more significant time investment there, but we have people that are willing to do that. That's why we won't see an immediate return on lowering that number without, with, let me try that again. We won't see the immediate return with lowering the number of calls where we don't have an EMT available because of that six-month lag.
Sure. And then do you, do you know what it costs to take, to go from an EMR to an EMT? Like, what does this, this training cost?
The last review I did, the EMR classes were running around $250, $300, the EMT classes were running $700 to $950, so there is a significant cost jump as well, which one of the things that is good for this year and something we would absolutely push for the next fiscal year, that's why the Fire Department has a training budget, so we can help get our people trained up with these additional certifications.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
And I think as far as, you know, this would allow you, or allow the Fire Department to begin responding to someone in distress upon arrival, even if AMT wasn't there, so as to address some issues that have come up in the past, I think this could resolve, you, you would, you'd be able to assist this person immediately upon arrival, correct?
So we can do that now, as EMRs, but this would allow, I'd say, much greater capacity in what we're able to do prior to AMT's arrival.
And this doesn't step on AMT's toes at all, correct?
Absolutely not. They are more than happy to work with people of all training levels. I mean, they, if they have a call where they need additional help, they're the first ones to ask us, hey, can you guys ride in and work alongside of us?
So, so I just want to make sure that as far as our contract with AMT, we wouldn't be in violation of that, you're not doing any kind of transportation or anything like that?
No.
And don't plan to?
No, we have no plans to try to bring forward bringing back an ambulance agency.
Well, we were EMT-based up until a few years ago, correct?
We did have a field upgrade certification up to a few years ago.
Yes.
I will be.
Well, you were already under contract with AMT.
Right. I will be completely honest with you, going back through the requirements for that, I don't know how we had it, because there were a couple of things that we didn't have that they required. I don't know if that was an agreement when we switched EMS systems or what have you. As far as the EMS office told us, we were kosher at that time. Things have since changed. So I can't speak for what happened in the past, I can only speak for now, but I want to make sure that, you know, I'm not hiding anything here, I'm being fully transparent.
And the feedback I've received, Trustee Wigginton, is that the AMT employees would rather our staff have more training and be more at the EMT level, because they would be better fitted to suit, like, better suited to help them in, in the action than the, than at the EMR level.
And I, I agree, I think that this, again, will address some of the concerns that AMT has issued to us. So, yeah, I, I think, Don, what you explained to me is what action you need from us is you need approval, correct?
Since it is over the $2,500 limit, we would need board approval to make the purchase.
Okay. Counsel, I'm looking to you, because of the amount of this purchase, does this need to be put out for bid?
It's equipment, and it's specialized equipment, so, boy, how much is it?
It's less, it's 22-some thousand, so it's less than, I think.
$22,479 was the quote I received.
If you're satisfied that this is a good deal and you don't want to put off the acquisition of the equipment long enough to get a bid, if it's, if we get three, four, so.
It's a little chicken or the egg, right? Because no one, what you said, Don, is no one wants to get trained for, to do this, no one puts the personal investment if it's not going to pan out.
Right.
So while we wouldn't be able to utilize it immediately, having this is the incentive to move forward.
Well, we would be able to utilize it, utilize it immediately with the current EMTs we have. It wouldn't be utilized to its fullest potential until the additional training.
All right, so Counsel, I want to wrap this up. So if, if there's.
This can be acquired without bidding, but bidding is always a good idea.
Well, so if I ask if there's consensus tonight to move forward with the purchase, are you okay with that, or do we need to put it back on the agenda for action, final action?
My preference would be that if you're on the agenda, has a specific action item.
Okay, is there a consensus tonight to move forward with this? Anybody object?
Yes.
All right, so we'll try and get that on the next agenda for approval. Thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, we beat miscellaneous, any miscellaneous to come for the board?
One item, Mayor.
Yep.
And Shane has waited patiently back there, and I was, if, if he's willing, you know, from a police perspective, and Chief, you correct me, I think we would love to hear how things are going.
Hi Shane, welcome.
I'll make a brief.
All right. Oh, we, this thing again. Okay, the, the packets each of you have, standard stuff that we always go over, the front page is the map, of course, of all of our ordinance districts. These stats are for the month of July, there's separate stats for the month of August, but 55 notices, ordinance notices were given out for the month of July. We do have three that are currently pending, and those three that we, we do have, we're working with legal to get proper resolution on those, they're kind of beyond the, the means of the police department, privacy issues, that type of thing, so we're, we're working with those to get, those taken care of. One vehicle was towed, Village Mode, Public Works Mode III properties in July for us. We, we also have additional ones that are on a regular rotation mow list, those are abandoned properties, bank-owned properties, that type of thing. So for the year, we're at 254 notices so far, I think that's a pretty good number. And I have noticed this past month that a lot more people are, they know that we're out there pounding the pavement, we, they're giving notices out, so I'm seeing a lot of people just step up and mow their yard, clean up their garbage, take their garbage cans, whatever the case may be. I think the stats for next month might reflect that. It's, you gotta look a little harder to find, to find the violations now, that of course are always going to be there, but not as, not as bad at the, the beginning of the summer or spring. On the landlord registration, we did, inspected 16 houses in the month of July, all of those, no, no serious violations, some minor recommended updates on those. And then I did include the, the portal for ordinance complaints. It's, it's really taken off, we get a lot of hits on that, and I did include, like I was saying, just a sample of one. You can, you can read through it, but they, I think the, the town really appreciates the option of not having to call in, they can go right to our website, you know, announce their complaint, whatever issues they're having, and then I respond back to them accordingly, and, and we get, we get those issues taken care of. But a lot more people are using that as a means to get information to us, and like I said, I just wanted to include that little letter, basically thanking the board, thanking whoever was involved for setting up that program. So that's really all I have for, for this meeting, it's been a long one, so any questions? Any concerns? All good?
I think you covered, we appreciate all you do too. You wear a couple of hats and we do, do a lot of work, so thank you, Shane.
Of course, absolutely, thank you very much.
Okay, any other miscellaneous?
I just have a question for Trustee Weisenberg. So now that we have a, you know, new direction that we're going with the Fire Department, and I know we'll get on that right away, I would like to know if you could give an update on the Fire Protection District, and if, you, I know you said it was citizen-led charge, but you're the one who collected the signatures, so have those been submitted and is that going forward? I see signage throughout the community saying vote yes.
I did make those signs.
Okay.
I collected signatures, and that's the update I have for you. As for the status of those signatures, I'm not really at the liberty right now to discuss that, but we do, I think the minimum signature was 50, so we have exceeded that amount. Other than that, I have no other update.
Okay. I just think that if this is something that's going to go forward, we really need to, you know, educate the public as to what that means and what that entails.
I understand that, it's the public doing it, and they don't report to this board, so I don't really have an update for you on what the public is doing. It's their liberty, it's their right to put an initiative on the ballot if they want an initiative on the ballot, so I'm not sure, quite sure what you want from me.
I, it was a statement, I think we should educate the community as a board potentially as to what that means.
Well, I, I, let me interject, I, I think, I don't disagree with that, I think you can do it from this arena here, but I'm not sure that the board council can spend money to educate, can we? One way or the other?
We, you know, we should not use that money to ballot initiative like that, no.
Okay.
Any other miscellaneous? Okay, let's move on. Okay, let's move on to payment of the bills. I'd ask for a motion to pay the bills.
I make a motion to pay the bill.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any question on any of the bills or discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk?
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
And it passes, the bills are paid. Madam Clerk, the treasurer's report.
As of the end of July, in the village-controlled accounts, there was $7,837,755.20. In the water-controlled accounts, there was $2,104,986.83.
All right, you've heard the treasurer's report, I would ask for a motion to approve.
I move to approve the treasurer's report.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion or question on the report? Hearing none, Madam Clerk?
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, the report is approved and accepted. Trustee Gett?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor of the motion to adjourn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Aye's have it.